And allocate to other projects.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's October 10th, 2016. And today, and this is Moscow's Public Works and Finance Committee. To my right, Councillor Steed; and left, Councillor Bonzo; and over here is City Supervisor Redner. First item on the agenda is the approval of the Public Works and Finance Committee meeting minutes from September 26th.
I just have a change in the second bullet. Under request for city sponsorship of Idaho Legislative Tour, it's just a speller, I'm sure. It's mid-paragraph during the discussion. It says, "The tour provides the community a change," and just "community a chance to talk." It's just a simple speller thing.
Okay. Did you find it?
No, I've read it. I'm good.
She's good. Okay. You're good with that, with the change?
I'm good with the change and the minutes.
I'm good with those two. Okay, those are passed. Next up is the dispersment report for September 2016.
Our Assistant Finance Director is out, so I will, if you will go to number three, Mr. Chairman, I will run downstairs and get that report and have it up here for your review.
In that case, we move along to number three, which is a public meeting for a proposed lot division of Lot 19, Block 5, Indian Hills, Sixth Edition. Mike?
So what you have before you today is a request from Susan Wilson on behalf of Thompson Development for a lot division of Lot 19, Block 5, which is in the Indian Hills Sixth Edition to the city of Moscow. So it's 4.69 acres in size, highlighted in red in the center of your screen. You've got Indian Hills Drive there to the south. An older aerial imagery, so this is from about 2012. All this infrastructure, the streets and the roads have since been completed. So Indian Hills Drive, you have Blaine Street running north-south. The Pony Place has been completed and homes are starting to be constructed in those areas. Looking north, you have Altourist Technology Park with Altourist Drive. And then to the east, Mountain View Road. That's currently the USDA Office Building there at the intersection of Indian Hills and Mountain View. Zoning configuration of the area, currently zoned residential office. You've got the RTO designation to the north with Altourist. And then within Indian Hills 6, you have a mixture of some R3, some R2, some R4 on Altourist Drive and residential office with some townhouse development on Altourist Drive as well. Immediately to the east is general business designation. You've got a vacant lot in between this parcel and the USDA building on Mountain View Road. To the south is a farm ranch designation across Indian Hills Drive. So what the RO designation says, you know, for residential uses, we draw a distinction between residential and commercial uses within this zone. Residential uses require a 50-foot minimum lot width, 5,000 square foot or 800 square feet per dwelling unit, lot area requirement. Non-residential uses don't have a minimum lot width or a minimum lot area requirement. And within the RO zone, we really allow a wide variety of residential uses. Could be single-family, two-family, multifamily, twin homes, townhouses. Really allow all residential options within this zone, as well as some limited commercial options, usually in the form of a professional office-type use. This was the record of survey showing the proposed division. So taking that 4.69 acre parcel and dividing that into a 1.27 acre parcel to the east, and then you have the resultant parcel of 3.42 acres to the west. So it meets that minimum lot size requirement as well as the minimum lot width, 180 feet you can see and width adjacent to Indian Hills Drive. This is what it looks like on the ground. And per our requirements, we've noticed everybody within 600 feet of this property as well as posted the site seven days in advance. And my recommendation before you tonight is to take public comment, if applicable, and recommend approval of lot division requests with no conditions. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Should I have any questions? I can't think of any.
Yeah. So anybody out there want to speak to this during the public meeting, provide any more information? Susan?
Hi, this is Susan Wilson. I represent Thompson Development, 208 South Main Street, Suite Number 2. There's not much I can add because it's a pretty simple proposal. As you may remember, when we rezoned it to RO in 2013, it was with the intent to keep that big, it was initially 5.69 acres and we split off to general business. But the intent was to make sure that it was open to address whatever the market demand is. And Indian Hills Phase 2 and 3 is kind of spread out a long time, so there hasn't been a whole bunch of market-driven changes particularly for this particular parcel. But fortunately, we have somebody who's interested in doing something with it. So slowly but surely, you know, we still have the general business one-acre parcel, and slowly but surely, we're being able to address some of the market demand. And it was intended to be mixed use. The whole development, the whole Indian Hills was intended to be mixed use. So I think we're slowly but surely accomplishing that with these proposed divisions development. But I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have, if I can, I should say. It's a pretty simple proposal, but for the record, I'm in favor of it. So are the Thompsons.
So I don't have anything.
I didn't either. It was pretty simple.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to chime in? Okay, nobody rushing up. I remember the same thing Susan does, was just the zoning that's there was sort of a placeholder, waiting to see which way the market decided to go and then rezone as appropriate. So anybody have a recommendation they'd like to make, or should I do it?
You can do it.
Well, I would recommend going forward with the recommendation of staff and accept the proposal as is. Do we need to put this on regular agenda?
It'll be a public hearing on the regular?
No.
Or is this take care of?
Lot division is done. That's the modified process that the public input is done at this meeting. It can go on regular or consent. This Monday, we don't have a lot of agenda items, so this might be a good thing to kind of review the process and put it on regular agenda.
Let's do that, then.
Okay.
Okay, done.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Eloquent. Okay, back up to number two, the dispersment report.
Thank you. As indicated in the packet, our largest expenditure of $1,419 is for payroll. Large expenditures this month include, this is our root control billing cycle, about $50,000 for that for the sewer department. We also have Titan Technologies for the southeast sewer line trunk line, Phase 4, and about a quarter of a million dollars. Albrighton Sons for Third Street reconstruction at about $300,000. Intermountain Slurry Seal shows up this time at $241,000. J.B. Engineers for sanitary trunk line Phase 4 engineering at $26,441. Big bill for 390, almost $398,000 to Board Longyear for their work on well number 10. So with that, those are the particular things that were of interest to me at least, so if the committee has other interests.
I had just questions in dispersments, of course, because of F Street blowing out. Like where does that show up on here?
I don't believe that they are here yet.
Oh, okay.
No, excuse me. Germer Construction, we've got just right now $6,000 for their removal of the asphalt. The reconstruction itself, the paving and all the sewer line replacement will be in the next billing cycle.
And then how do we pay for that, since I've not remembered or read or all that?
Well, we inquired, since it was a sewer line break, excuse me, a water line break, we inquired of our insurance carrier, ICRMP, Idaho County's.
Minnesota.
Risk management program. Anyway, and they do not cover underground utilities or pavement that breaks up, amazingly enough, because of that. So we will take the funding for the street out of any accumulation we have in the street fund. The sewer fund will replace any sewer underground utility that needs to be replaced. Water fund will take out of their accumulation for capital projects for replacement of the water line, and that's how it'll be paid for.
And when was this one slated to be kind of looked at anyway before?
It actually was not slated. It'd been replaced three years ago, not the line itself. The line would be, we just put new pavement over, just redid the street. So it was not scheduled, since it was only 40-year-old pipe, 35, 40-year-old pipe. It would not have been slated to be replaced anytime in the near future. So it's one of those things, it was a break. Unfortunately, under a brand-new section of street, we responded like we do for any water main break.
And so the ballpark that this ended up costing is that, I mean, you've seen enough, would that kind of be where it falls in?
Yeah, I don't see, do you want to know how much?
Yeah.
I'm not the guy to be talking to about that because of the pavement itself. I really would not want to put that out without having that information, but I can certainly have a report and have that sent out to you.
Yeah, mostly just curiosity over time.
Okay.
And then I just think because it happened, you know, there's been like, so are there other areas that have happened in the last, that kind of thing?
If I may respond to that.
Oh, absolutely.
I think the replacement, we TV our lines, we check water mains, we look at age of infrastructure. Whenever we redo a street, we generally try to assess the underground utilities to make sure something like this doesn't happen, we have to tear up a new street to put stuff in. But breaks occur. And what they're doing, under this particular break, they had a longitudinal blowout on cast iron pipe, which is fairly brittle. It's a good material, but fairly brittle. We use ductile iron now. But they gauge the age of it and determine whether or not, when they do redo a street, whether they should replace that. But our comprehensive water and sewer plan has the, as much as we know, the age of the pipe and the materials that are in the ground. And then as they build their capital maintenance plan, they will determine how much they can do and then get authorization to do that. I would note that this is one of those situations where stuff happens. And stuff happens that doesn't, that isn't, you can't insure against the casualties, so...
I know. I'm not questioning that.
And I'm not insinuating that you are. What I'm saying is, as we build our budgets and they have a certain amount of money for just this contingency, it's why we keep a certain amount of money in our operating fund. And in the enterprise funds, it's three months, operating expenses is what we keep in our operating reserve, we call it.
Yeah, so that was, you went where actually I was thinking. So in terms of preparedness, we didn't use all the fine. We might not have used half the fine, or in case there's another incident, we're covered.
You bet. And that is a large enough, that three-month reserve or operating reserve is sufficient to handle a few of these. We don't want to do too many of them, obviously. We want our capital maintenance program to make sure this doesn't happen. But yeah, it's large enough to take care of that.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Walter?
Yeah, Gary, I would be interested in what the estimated total cost of repair is going to be, including the temporary that was done to get that street back to, back in use. And also, what if anything was done to see if they think this could happen 100 feet up the same street?
I can comment a little bit.
I mean, I think that the only way to do that is to excavate it.
Yes.
I don't know how far they plan to go from the break.
You know, the high-pressure water pipe, pressurized water main is a little harder to gauge because typically what happens is...
Get camera.
Exactly. Sewer lines, you can go up and down and that sort of thing. As I said, this was cast iron pipe where the street, the new street was in, it broke and floated that street off, and they are replacing all of the cast iron pipe underneath the part of the street that had to be excavated and removed. So they're removing that part as an issue. Now further up F Street to the east, it could go, but unless...
And if they remove that section under the pavement and see, wait a minute, there's a place here that looks like it could go in a year or next week, then they may have to be more concerned about...
The eastern portion.
What the rest of that street pipe might be like.
Yeah, and what they do when they repair these things is they will gauge, try to estimate the condition of the remaining, and then they'll put that in their capital replacement program.
Okay.
So like I said, it's underground, you make the best shot you can, but they did a pretty good job in this case.
Thank you.
So otherwise, it looks like nothing unexpected. There's some construction season, and the monthlies are higher than they are during the winter time when nothing's happening.
They certainly are.
So pass it on and sign away. Next step after this is the resolution for destruction of documents. Mayhem.
Idaho Code allows us to, or dictates what is a permanent record and dictates when we should, when we are allowed to get rid of certain documents. The city clerk works with the city attorney and others. The AIC, for instance, gives a lot of guidance on this. We have a resolution that essentially gives guidance to the city clerk on what can be destroyed and what can't. So if you look in the resolution itself, it looks pretty complex, but really, it is an annual housekeeping thing that the city clerk does. Certain things we keep forever. I think commercial building plans we keep. We keep all of our ordinances, resolutions, minutes, that sort of thing. Contracts we keep in perpetuity are just some of those things. Other things are things that after three years you can get rid of. We're keeping a lot of stuff digitally these days, so those are things, I think contracts are things that we don't, aren't dictated by the state law to keep forever, but we do ourselves by our council's direction. So that's what this is all about. What the clerk does is sends out a request to, or an inquiry to all departments saying, here's the resolution, this is what I need, if you have documents that you no longer utilize. Because of storage space and things like that, we try to maintain that. So they come back, she looks it over, she works with the city attorney and the managers of those departments, and this is the end result as to things which we no longer require that we have to keep.
So this one's kind of my own curiosity bit, as we move further into the digital document storage. I assume we store some of those documents onsite, some offsite? And when it comes time to dispose of those, are they disposed of in a secure fashion, like overriding hard drives, or they just delete the file name, but the actual document stays?
You'd have to ask the IS department. We certainly could have them respond to that. My understanding is, is they will, for instance, emails. We keep emails for a certain period of time in compliance with keeping correspondence, if you will. And there's a lot of training on this. It's like, how long do you have to keep a sticky note that has something on it of some relevance and those sorts of things? So I ask how they retake that storage space, I don't know. I know that it is maintained on our own servers. The capacity of our storage, even at that, is pretty large. In fact, Jesse was just addressing the department heads not too long ago, asking them, because we're great hoarders, we want to make sure we, everybody's got a copy of everything. So you might have a contract out there that, you know, the city attorney's got five drafts of it, or more, I guess more accurately, his legal secretary has five copies of it. I'll keep a copy. If I have anything to do with it, the clerk will have the official copy. There'll be a couple of hard copies laying around. It's the same document. So trying to manage that, what he told us was, you know, if you don't need it, you know the official custody is held with someone else in the organization, get rid of it because we have to keep buying more and more storage to take care of that. So it's a Herculean task, and I think the clerk does a pretty good job of keeping us up on that because, as I said, if you look at my email, Ben, it's, I constantly get notifications that you need to start getting rid of this stuff.
So there is offsite storage, though, for the critical documents? So they aren't all just on one server and one building?
Yes, in fact, IS, I believe, has one or two, the main and then a backup here, and then maintains an offsite location as well.
Walter?
As much as I would like to know how you feel you could safely get rid of the prior to 2011 chicken documentation, I will ask you, what was the aquatics council?
I don't know.
From 2007, you're disposing of the aquatics council minutes. I've never heard of the aquatics council.
I don't know. Laurie, can you shed some light? Apparently, the people in this room are not familiar with that council, but it's obviously was not an official council-appointed. And that happens a lot, sometimes you'll have...
I've been hanging around here for 20 years and never heard of it.
Yeah. We'll have notes from little task forces that we do in-house that, on some particular project, that never sees the light of day, it comes to you as a single recommendation, so. So anyway, what you have before you is a fairly comprehensive resolution, but we need to do that in order to get official direction from the council that we can dispose of these documents.
Unless you want to know about the chickens.
Not really, no. So may I take it that you're recommending that the resolution be approved?
Yes, I am.
Oh, very good.
Hopefully, Gary doesn't feel a need to expand the next city council meeting by having this one talk.
I think we're probably okay with that.
Yes, I think so.
Somebody take my pen.
It'd be yonder. So do we have a Jen Piffner for us for reports?
You unfortunately get the abridged version from someone who's not as eloquent as she is, but I will do my best.
Okay.
This is our time for our eighth comprehensive citizen survey. We've done them since 2002, and they serve as a benchmark for us. We're doing something a little bit different this year. The survey document has gotten fairly large. If you've seen our last couple of city surveys, citizen surveys, we have our benchmark-type questions that, for instance, you'll see, and we send these out in a way that we take random addresses and we retain a service to generate those random addresses. We break the city into different sectors that have some of the same type of needs. For instance, University Heights is different from, oh, Parkview Estates area. Downtown has different issues, so we break those out into discrete groups. They all get the same questions, but if, some of the questions, if you look in the citizen survey, it says, one of our benchmark questions is, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? And then you have a Likert scale from 1 to 5 about how safe you feel. In order to determine whether people in central Moscow downtown feel safe, they may feel very safe downtown, streetlights and all that, but you may have certain sectors of the city that where folks say, no, I don't feel safe. So we monitor that as we go, so we can look at, okay, is there a need? The police use that as an identifier that perhaps they need to step up patrols or more citizen education or something in that area. So you have those types of questions, and we usually have some questions on issues of the moment, like there were questions about Highway 95 a couple of years ago. There was a question about downtown restrooms. There were questions about ball fields when that was an issue of moment. So there's some questions like that. We expanded the citizen survey, I think after the first one or two, to request questions from citizen commissions as to, are there things that those commissions wanted to go? What happened was these commissions had a lot of good questions they wanted to ask, but they expanded the survey so much that people would get them and our response rate started to fall. And in order to have a statistically valid survey, you must have a certain amount of returned surveys. So this year, we're going to try something new, and there will be a survey every year from here on out. The citizen survey will come out biannually, but we will also have a survey that addresses commission issues come out in the off-year. So it will be biannual itself. Hopefully, it'll make the surveys of such a size that when someone gets them, they just don't throw them right in the round file because they don't want to take two hours to do a survey. So fairly comprehensive process. I'm sure Bill Belknap could come up here and explain it a lot more, since he was in charge of the second and third surveys, as I recall, maybe even one after that. So that's essentially it. Just wanted to let you guys know that we are preparing for that. It will be published or be sent out here within the next couple of weeks. Typically, we allow, I believe, a month for folks to get it. We'll send a reminder card out to those addresses that we're lucky enough to get a survey. They'll come back, we will tabulate them, and we will bring reports back to you. And the official citizen survey response will be brought to you, I believe, in January or February, so.
Sitting on two commissions, or three, they, Mike has started to talk about that every other year thing was happening. And so the commission members were concerned because they thought that the city survey would get priority and people wouldn't feel as impelled to answer. And so I know that you all discussed that, so what's the best way to, because I know you collected enough data to do that, but...
From our perspective, from a staff perspective, they're equally important. From a citizen's perspective, remember, it's a random survey. So the pool of people, there'll be some people who've been involved in every one of these. There'll be others who've never been involved, and some who've had one, some who've had two. So for the commission survey, they'll get the same random, I guess, spread or dissemination of these surveys. So there shouldn't be, I wouldn't think, unless some citizen gets one each year and they say, what's this about? The chances of that, while in Moscow are statistically higher than they would be in a larger population or region, they should be of such a size that people will respond to them. And certainly, what we're trying to do, if somebody won't respond to this because it's too voluminous, not only does the city lose our gauge, but the commissions never get to find out what those people thought. So this is just an idea to try and boost that up a little bit.
Yeah, so you're taking it from a 40-minute, would it become really about a 40-minute complete time to down to maybe 20?
It's what we're hoping.
Yeah.
And it's usually on a Likert scale, although there is a catch-all question at the back of the survey that says, let us know what else is on your mind. And those have been some interesting responses over the years. But anyway.
Yes.
But it's something we regularly do, and it is the assigned task of the assistant city supervisor. They're in charge of this project. We have a couple of administrative interns this year, MPA program students who will assist with that as well.
Is that who's talking to the commissions?
Excuse me?
Is Jen talking to the commissions or the...
I don't know how that was disseminated, but certainly, if you're getting questions on your commission, we can step up that information out there. So we don't want the commissions to think that it's not important or anything else. It just got to the point, we couldn't...
No, and I think that's what, I think, I think they didn't have enough history, and then, you know, you take them to the website and you show all the, because all the surveys are online.
Sure.
So then they begin to realize that there's this accumulation of information. The fear was that the, from the three that spoke, the three, that they, because people said, oh, it's a city survey, so they filled it out, they were worried that because it was a commission survey, it wasn't going to...
It'll go out as a city survey.
Okay. I think they were worried that it wasn't going to have the same, like, gravity.
Yeah.
And so then people might not answer it, and especially two of the commissions were like, well, you know, this really dictates how we make our goals, too. And they were already crafting questions back in August. So they were concerned that they would then lose what they wanted to do to promote the city.
Actually, I think the chances of getting answers are better with the new scheme, the new process of devoting every other year to city commission, city commission. And it doesn't do anything good if people won't fill it out. It's like, it's like everybody touting nutrition these days. It's not nutrition unless you swallow it, and it's not a survey unless you get a response.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my suspicion is that we're going to end up with a bit of a hybrid, anyway. There will be issues before some commission that must, they need guidance on now, so there may be one or two questions that come in every couple of years, I don't know. And there may be a question the council wants answered. And so we may have a city question in the commission, city commission survey. So I think it should work out. I think with the, with the random dissemination, the chances of someone saying, the city survey's the one I'm going to respond to, I'm not going to respond to this one, is pretty slight.
No, and I felt like it was, it was good on the city's part and to make a decision not to collect information. I mean, you could tell it was starting to drop off, and the results were consistent. So that was beneficial, so I think it's good to address it in a new way. It's just their fears, and that's why I was asking, maybe from higher up than a council member liaison, somebody else going to the commission?
Sure, there is a higher up than the council member liaison, but we can certainly get... get additional information out to the commissions.
Okay.
So, Walter?
Good.
I'm good, too. I think it's a good idea. Okay? So, anybody have anything else?
Nothing from staff.
Nothing here. Okay, we're adjourned.